Good morning.
Good morning.
Tuesday, nine AM, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, we'll call the Door County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Could you try me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Uh, the presentation of the agenda, or roll call first, I'm sorry. Okay.
It works.
Joel and Marty, can you guys try again if you did?
Did you hit present? Present? Does it say anything?
No.
But you're not in either.
You gotta hit present.
We shouldn't have meetings after holiday.
Uh, Ryan's gonna leave early. Ten fifteen or something like that. Ryan will be leaving the meeting early.
Uh, those, uh, phone calls are bad.
It's just stale.
Are they?
Um, if you have a power cycle.
All right, you got everybody here. You're good. You have twenty-one present.
Okay, we, we have twenty-one members present. Uh, we do the presentation of the agenda. It's been duly posted as, okay, there's a motion by Supervisor Norton, a second by Supervisor Thace to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions? Otherwise, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries correspondence. There was an email from M. Peters and also a Transportation Quarterly Newsletter. Any comments on correspondence? Mr. Boltman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just wondering, maybe Ken, if you knew, or, I mean, I know, um, Joe's not here, but as far as the impact with the food pantries, do we have any information from who, you know, Health and Human Services Department about that, or are we still sort of in a holding pattern?
Okay. Well, Ken maybe knows more, but I would think it's probably in a holding pattern at this point.
Correct. Sorry, no, I was just gonna say it's a holding pattern.
Yeah. But it is something that Health and Human Services will have to be watching. Okay. Uh, public comment. Uh, anyone in the audience that wishes to make a public comment? Would you step to the microphone, please, and then state your name and address?
My name's Michelle Roma. I'm at ten fourteen Superior Street, um, here in Surgeon Bay. At the last county board meeting, the wording added to the rules of order about proclamations immediately raised a red flag for me. Speaking of flags, it reminded me of the exclusionary flag rule from twenty twenty-three. The rule about proclamations feels very much like an attempt to gatekeep anything but capitalistic pursuits of the board. This is a shame because I think that pursuits of humanity are far more important than anything that contributes to the bottom line. True value lies in people, nature, and art. In today's world, it is important for the county to commit itself to do more to support the LGBTQIA+ community. This community enriches every aspect of Door County as musicians, artists, educators, service industry workers, medical professionals, small business owners, et cetera. Our city of Surgeon Bay, where this county building stands, has given Open Door Pride a yearly proclamation since twenty seventeen. The Village of Sister Bay and Bailey's Harbor have also given proclamations, and we thank the supervisors who represent those municipalities. Proclaiming Pride Month gives hopes to those seeking to live a life true to who they are, and it shows those that already call Door County home, those contemplating making Door County their home, and those that are just visiting that they are welcome here, which I argue impacts county operations. The Door County Tourism Board, Destination Door County, and the Door County Economic Development Corporation both have firsthand knowledge on how supporting the LGBTQIA+ community has shown direct and positive economic impact. This community deserves to know that the county stands behind them and that this is a safe place. Deliberately excluding the Proclamation of Pride Month from the agenda is a harsh blow to a community that has already been attacked on an international scale. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to make a comment? Okay, not seeing anyone in the public. Uh, anyone online, Ken?
Sure, if there's someone online that'd like to speak, uh, if you could please raise your hand and I'll give you the floor. I will ask two times if anyone would like to speak. And then, for the second time, is there anyone who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we'll return back to the meeting.
Okay, Supervisor's response. Is there any response to the public comment? Okay. Seeing none, the minutes of the April fifteenth and the April twenty-ninth, uh, board meetings were included in the packet. Could we have a motion to approve those, please? Okay, there's a motion by Supervisor Fisher, second by Supervisor Norton. Any questions regarding those minutes? If not, all in favor of approval, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. The County Administrator Monthly Report on Operational and Capital Projects.
Sure, for this month, it was pretty much straightforward in terms of the project updates. Uh, probably the one that's the most active right now is the roof at the Justice Center. That's in full progress. They actually have a lot of the project, um, ready to go for the installation of the new equipment, which, uh, is going in probably this week. Other than that, it was, uh, pretty status quo. So unless there's any questions, we can continue.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay, Mr. Zettel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ken, at, maybe not at this meeting, but maybe in judicial public safety, uh, could we have maybe a follow-up relative to the cellcom outage and, um, impacts to the, uh, the county, how the county responded, and any kind of potential future risk mitigation we need to consider, especially in the upcoming budget? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is there, um, any information at this time regarding that cellcom outage that could explain a little what happened or how it affected the county?
Sure, I can give you the brief one. Uh, Jason would be the best, but I know he's not here. But really, obviously, we had the outage. Uh, it did affect, obviously, our operations because we rely on cellcom for a lot of our, our business in terms of our cellphones. We did have the phone systems up working, I think, by the next morning in terms of our landline operations, our phone system and stuff like that, and nine-one-one was operational. But then after that point in time, we kind of were, I guess, among the masses in terms of our operations, in terms of our business cellphones and all that. So we're kind of just one of the customers at that point. Um, but I know they did work with us to prioritize both our, getting our, I guess, what I consider our, our landlines up and running so we can make calls as the, as the, as the business aspect. And that's how we handled that part of it. So, but we can provide more details and then discuss about backups and options, um, at public safety if you'd like.
The nine-one-one service, I believe, continued through the whole process.
That is correct.
Okay. Pending business, I have nothing. Resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash forty-six, Supervisor Zettel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I recommend approval of the resolution two zero two five dash four six, Approval of the Town of Union Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Zettel, a second by Supervisor Anigle. Any questions on that resolution? Okay. Do we need a roll call? Okay. Okay, all in favor of the approval of the resolution, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Yes. Okay. You have property in that, in that area. Okay, thank you. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-seven. Supervisor Thace, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, um, present Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-seven, which is a donation to the Door County Transportation Department. Um, it is in the sum of five thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. It's from the Door County Community Foundation, and it is to be used, uh, through door-to-door and, uh, Door Connect for transportation expenses for the public.
Okay, that was a, a motion by Supervisor Thace, a second by Supervisor Rubillard. Any questions on that, uh, grant money? If not, all those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight. Uh, Mr. Thace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to present Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight, which is another grant for the, uh, approval of DNR Wisconsin, DNR Grant for, for the European Frog Bite Control, Frog Bit Control, and, um, it's, it's in the sum of eight thousand four hundred and three dollars. That's what the grant is, is for, and the, um, the department will, will have the match of twenty-eight seventeen. And if there's questions specific to this program, I believe Greg is here, can answer anything beyond that.
Any questions for our Director of Land Use, um, Soil and Water, almost said Land Use Services? Okay. Uh, seeing no questions. On a motion by Supervisor Thace, a second by Supervisor Roy Engelbert, all in approvals, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine, uh, confirming and ratifying the authority of council for Door County to add additional defendants to the opioid litigation. Okay. Todd, would you take that one also, please?
Yes, I'd like to present, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine. Um, we reviewed this at admin. I guess it's just, uh, kind of a process of adding names to the litigation, and, uh, the council could probably give you way more detail if you're interested in that.
Okay. Sean, do you want to provide a little information?
The resolution before you is a resolution that, uh, pretty much every county in the state is going to be adopting. There was a hiccup with the opiate litigation. The attorneys that we had retained to represent us on a local level and a national level had started bringing action against pharmacy benefit managers, and some of those benefit managers had pushed back, saying, where's the authority of each county municipality in the opiate litigation to specifically bring action against us, our specific entity? Looking back at the engagement agreement, we did give the attorneys the ability to investigate the claims and bring action against responsible parties. This is to ratify that authority and to clarify that our attorneys do in fact have county support to bring action against pharmacy benefit managers if there's a determination that they can contribute into the opiate epidemic and, and issues resulting therefrom. So what this is doing is just ratifying the authority of the county board for our attorneys to bring action against additional parties.
Okay, any questions for Sean? Mr. Anigle?
Uh, yeah, at the administrative meeting, it was brought up about Sam's Club. Any further information?
I, I haven't heard yet. Um, I was at a conference the end of the week and just didn't have a chance to reach out and determine, but I will get that. It is on my list of things to do.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we have a motion by Supervisor Thace, a second by Supervisor Voight to approve the resolution. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries as well. Uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty, Supervisor Gunlickson.
Uh, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution, uh, twenty twenty-five dash fifty, which is an increase of the user fees for the emergency medical or ambulance service. Uh, it's been about five years since, uh, the committee has taken this issue up. Um, we debated it and hashed it out, and, uh, the new user fee list that's in front of everybody is what is being recommended by the committee for approval.
Okay, any questions regarding those, those fees? Does anyone need any further explanation? Director LeClaris here? Okay. I'm seeing, okay. Supervisor Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, uh, know, uh, it's one thing to have fees and to increase the fees or lower them. Do we collect those fees?
Aaron, could you, uh, do a little explanation on the fees, please?
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Uh, to Supervisor Fisher's question, I'm drawing a blank on the certain percentage off the top of my head, but, um, no, we don't collect all the fees. The, the big hurdle we have in this county is, is Medicare and specifically Medicare. That's over sixty-five percent of our patients, so that comes with a mandatory adjustment by the federal government. Uh, Medicaid also does as well, um, which is more than Medicare. And then on top of that, though, we do work, you know, our ladies in the office work very hard to collect everything that is collectible. So that, that goes as far as we'll, we'll do payment plans for people. We'll take as low as five dollars a month. It's interest-free. Um, but if people aren't responding to us, uh, we will work with Sean's office and put people to collections, intercept their tax returns, things like that, to try to recover the money.
Not, they just need it, but they're not in a position to pay.
Correct.
And we must understand that, correct?
We do, but that goes to those payment plans.
Yeah.
And we work with them to figure out how to do that without charging somebody interest. As long as they're communicating with us, I'm sorry. As long as they're communicating with us, we'll do what we can to help them out.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Zettel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Aaron, relative to the, um, to the fees here on mileage, I'm assuming that will impact us relative to our transfer program with Door County Medical Center.
That'll help increase the revenue.
It'll help, but it'll just make sure that your costs are, reflects your costs being covered.
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, Supervisor Norton?
Thank you. Uh, so, just kind of a random question. It says resident versus non-resident rates. I mean, I get that we're a tourist area, but is that something that's done in other counties? Or is that just looked at here because we're a tourist area?
Um, really big in Florida. Um, when we looked at-
Because tourist area.
Correct. Um, there are other communities in northeast Wisconsin that try to do it, and when we looked at, compared their rates to what they were doing, typically it was a hundred dollars difference. So if you look in that explanation, the last full set of data we had, I think it was, surprisingly to us, we thought it'd be a higher rate, but it was fifteen percent were non-residents. So when we looked at that hundred dollar difference and then trying to figure out, back when, uh, Sean's predecessor was here, it was trying to figure out what deems a resident versus non-resident and how we determine that and is a taxpayer, non-taxpayer, and we just felt for-
Like, snowbirds, to be a resident, you have to be there like six months and one day. You might be here five months and twenty-nine days, but technically, you're not a resident, even though you're here half a year.
Right, and they very well could be a taxpayer.
Right.
Right, so they're helping fund the service to begin with.
Yeah, it was just not one of those, I was like, well, is, is that a thing other places? Because, I mean, yeah, we have a lot of tourism, but-
Yep.
They, there's, you know, emergency is an emergency.
Right. In Florida, when I was researching something else, their, their differences in fees was quite drastic. Um, it wasn't a hundred bucks. It was hundreds, if not a thousand dollars difference, so. And it's something we continue to look at to see if there's value to do it that way.
Yeah, hundreds for them is a bigger difference, especially in some of the coastal tourist areas.
Correct.
All right.
Okay, I don't see any further questions or comments about this resolution. A motion by Gunlickson and second by Shaw to approve, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Okay, the next, thank you, Aaron. The next resolution is twenty twenty-five fifty-one. Appointments to the county board, Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is that Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one, which is a handful of, uh, appointments to the county subunits on page thirty-one of your packet, lists the names and the, and the, and the, um, term, um, of these appointments. So if you have any questions on those in particular, our administrator could likely answer those.
I think most of the appointments are under the administrator's-
Yep.
-suggestion. Okay. Any questions on those? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of approving that resolution, uh, motion by Thace, second by Combs. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two, Supervisor Miller, please. Uh, fifty-one, I'm sorry.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, okay. Yes. Gotta have better notes here, I guess. Okay. Supervisor, um... No, Supervisor Gunlickson, thank you.
Thank you.
You weren't prepared for that one?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two, which is an acceptance of the DMA PSAP grant, Door County Communication Center. This, this particular resolution is coming to the county board prior to going to the committee because it was, um, awarded, um, within a timeline that didn't meet the dates of getting to our Public Safety Committee, so it's here for approval prior to that. But one hundred percent, uh, approval of this is desired.
Okay, any questions on that grant? And that's the reason that it's presented under my name versus the-
Correct.
Committee. Okay. So, seeing none, we have a motion by Gunlickson and a second by Voight to approve, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five fifty-two. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Okay, uh, under ordinance says, uh, denial report, Supervisor Zettel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I recommend that the county board approve the report to the Door County Board of Supervisors, amendment to the zoning map of the town of Astapool. It's in reference to, uh, the Stopa Trust, uh, asking to rezone a portion of their, their property in parcel twenty-two, zero twenty-two, zero three, one sixty-two, two eighty-seven, eleven North Fourth, on Glidden Drive from Wetland, uh, to single-family residential. This, um, uh, petition was, was also done about six months, uh, prior, and there was a discrepancy on the driveway size. And, uh, after it was, again, denied by the county board at that time, they used the six months to basically reapply with, uh, the change for the driveway, but still, uh, it does affect, um, the fact that they'll be going into Wetlands, uh, which was the primary reason, uh, that the committee, RPC, moved for denial. Also, um, I'd like, uh, our attorney, or, uh, Sean, provide an update if you're packet. Previously, when you looked at some of these reports and these reports, um, on this one, you'll see that there was a public notice, and, uh, we're just, uh, following statutes relative to public notice and received a public notice by the municipality involved. So that's where you'll see the public notice added there, where in previous cases, um, that procedure, uh, wasn't typically followed.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Zettel or, or Sean? Okay, the recommendation then is for denial. A motion by Supervisor Zettel, a second by Supervisor Boltman. All in favor of approval of the denial report? Now signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Okay. Now Supervisor Miller. Twenty twenty-five oh one, the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to introduce Amendatory Ordinance twenty-five dash oh one, Amendment of the Chapter Three, Section three point one-two, Door County Code, which is an ordinance to comply with the state regulations allowing for, uh, former owners who lost their homes due to real estate taxes, uh, that would, this gives them the right to repurchase the property. Uh, what we're doing, we're following, as I mentioned, the state regulations, uh, and I would make a motion to approve this ordinance, and with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd like Sean to maybe give us a little more in-depth as to what that's all about.
So, as you all know, when an individual, a property owner, within the county doesn't pay their property taxes, we have a in-rem tax foreclosure process where we can foreclose on that property, uh, get it into the possession of the county, and sell it to recoup the taxes owed. There was some recent, um, Supreme, United States Supreme Court decision, and then a subsequent change to the statutes by our state legislature that changed how we do things with regard to the proceeds of the tax foreclosure sales when the county sells them. One provision that was added by our legislature is for single-family owner-occupied residences. They have the ability to redeem or repurchase the, not repurchase the property, but reacquire the property after the county has taken ownership of it. When our legislature implemented that section of the statute, they also added a section saying the county shall have an ordinance putting this into effect. So what you see before you is, um, the amendment to our county ordinance complying with the state statutes, providing the in-rem foreclosure process and specifically addressing owner-occupied single-family housing and allowing the owner to redeem. Now, when an owner redeems, what they have to do is, they have to indicate to the treasurer's office they're going to redeem. The treasurer then gets a title report showing all liens on the property existing prior to the county taking possession. The owner has to not only pay all outstanding taxes and the amount we charge to recoup the costs of the interim foreclosure process, they also have to clear all the liens existing against the property. So it's an uphill process for the landowner to do that, but our legislature thought it was important enough that we do give individuals the right to redeem their property. That's really what this is all about. If there's additional questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, are there any questions for, for Sean regarding this change? Okay. Supervisor Norton?
Um, the only question I have is, so let's say that happens and someone says, hey, what do I owe? And they find out they owe, just gonna make up a number, five thousand dollars. Is that due at one time? Is that a payment plan that gets set up? Because, I mean, somebody's gonna ask at some point how that works.
Yeah, the, there are tight timelines to do that. Um, I, I'd have to look at the ordinance to see what exactly that is, but I think it might be thirty or sixty days from the time the county takes possession of the property that the owner has to let the treasurer know and then to redeem that property. I may be off on the timelines, but there is a specific period where if you don't do it within this timeframe, we are going to, you know, not allow you to redeem and move forward to getting that property sold and back on the tax roll.
Okay, Supervisor Anigle?
Thank you. There, there is a level of logic to this, but then by the same token, by the time we take possession or even make an effort to, it's been a long process, three-plus years in efforts to do that. So my, my real question is, I'm looking at this document, Exhibit A, and I'm seeing the first lead-in paragraph as being stricken.
Yep.
Fine with that. Where's the rest? Is, is this entire, otherwise is this entirely a new document?
Absolutely. The, these, this, the part that is struck at the beginning was the existing language. Everything else is brand-new. And thi- this ordinance was, there's minor changes, but this is one developed by the Wisconsin Counties Association. They wanted a similar procedure for all counties to adopt. So this isn't something that I drafted from scratch. I went through it with the treasurer to try to keep our processes similar to how it has been in the past, so that we're not changing things while still implementing these new requirements. So it shouldn't vary the process of our tax foreclosures very much from a finance committee's standpoint, their role, what they're seeing, um, happen, but it is an entirely new ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by Supervi- I'm sorry, is there one? Oh, okay, then, I'm sorry.
See, you're a little thing, so, it, I was just, you know, reading again quick. So the county has a certain number of days to let them know about it through public notification, and then they can have the opportunity to purchase it, but then they also, it says the- but then they also, it says the county has to set a price, but it's like a hundred and fifty days for the county to set a price, but only ninety days for the purchaser to offer something. So I'm assuming you have to set the price before the ninety days to purchase starts?
The, or- Now, when you're redeeming a property, when the prior owner of a single-family owner, they're not- Be purchasing the property, because at that point, it hasn't been sold by the county yet. What they're doing is they're paying off the back taxes, they're paying off all liens on the property. Once they do that, we deed the property back to them. So there is no purchase price, it's an exception to the sale of, of the property by the county.
So the county's assessment would just be a reassessment for the new tax value in the future?
So what-
Changing deeds.
What, what you may be reading about the assessment in here is when we sell a property, the first time we, we put the property up for a public bid, the bid has to exceed the assessed value of the property. So the treasurer does get the property assessed so that we as a county know where do those bids need to come in at? That assessed value is published, so potential bidders know we have to be above, above this threshold on the first go-around. If the property doesn't sell for above that assessed value, the next time it's sold, it can be for any amount acceptable by the county.
Okay, any other questions then? Seeing none, okay, we have, thank you, Sean. We have a motion by Supervisor Miller and a second by Supervisor Fisher for approval of Resolution, ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one. We need to go to the voter board on that? And that passes with a vote of twenty-one yes and zero no's. Okay, special reports? We have no special reports today? New business? I believe there's, okay. Supervisor Hancock?
Thank you, I have for new business a request to put the Pride Proclamation on the June agenda. I did ask the chairperson to do that and did not hear back, so I'd like to do it through new business. As it relates to county business and county budgets, the Community Health Improvement Plan, sections one and two, or actually it's one and three, address this being that proclamations help with social, or help reduce social isolation and improve mental wellness. So both of those are key goals in the new plan, the Community Health Improvement Plan. So I'd like to see that put on the agenda as a proclamation in support of our own Community Health Improvement Plan, which says by December twenty twenty-five, we would have increased capacity for physical and mental health for our local workforce and that we would have measurable engagement and opportunities to reduce social isolation. So proclamations through research are known to do that for the LGBTQ plus community, so I'd like to see the proclamation on the June agenda.
Okay.
I think it could go to a vote, right, in new business for the agenda?
There.
Sean, would you?
Um, we, we can take a motion that's seconded and accepted, we do do a vote for placing matters on the upcoming agenda. However, we do have a recently approved county board rule of order where proclamations have to be directly tied to program, services, or budget of the county. So if we did have a vote in favor of placing this on the agenda, that would not do away with that county board rule. It would have to meet the requirements of the county board rule, or that rule would have to be suspended by a vote of the county board.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to put that on the June agenda and with the backing of that, again, being, I'll just repeat quickly, the Community Health Improvement Plan that our Public Health and Human Services Department put together and the committees with multiple community partners as a connection to our programs, budget, and planning as a county. And I won't repeat all of the other things I said, but for that, that would be the reason. So I don't want to suspend the rule, I think it falls within the rule for that reason.
I will second.
Okay. Sean, is it necessary to accept the motion at this time under the new business? That it, because it doesn't fit into our overall rules? Of the county board, I'm just-
We, we can accept the motion to place it on the next agenda where it could be considered, but it would have to fall under the county board rules at that time, or it would be out of order for the board to take action on it. Does that, I mean, so we can place it on the agenda, but if it doesn't meet the requirements of the county board rules of order, we haven't seen the proclamation yet, what it says. At that point, it'll be a determination of, does it meet with the county board rules of order? And at that point, are we going to amend the rules or redeem it out of order?
Okay, so there is a motion then to request to have a proclamation regarding LGBTQ H two, the county board?
Listed on the agenda at the June board meeting.
Would that be going to the admin before that, or are rules of order put responsibility on the county board chair? So it doesn't have to go to the admin committee?
Right, exactly, yes.
Okay, so there is a motion by Supervisor Hancock, a second by Supervisor Boltman. Any comments to that desire to have it placed on the agenda?
Can I make one more?
Supervisor Anigle first, please.
For me, it's very simple. I've through the years seen proclamations come through that I feel have no real connection to the county government, and we've approved them. It is difficult to understand how we're picking on this topic to change our rules. Thank you.
Okay, now Supervisor Hancock.
Thank you, my, my second comment on it is that I, I think it's a, if we made this new rule, this is a good testament. We, I feel it does connect to our county business. I picked out specific research and specific plans in our health plan that has been approved by the county board with these direct goals. So I guess the test of that will be if that committee or if that department feel that the mental well-being and reducing social isolation can be, can be accomplished with a proclamation or is a part of that. I'm not sure how that's going to be evaluated. I think that's an important thing. I also feel that as a board, we should have the opportunity to vote on things and share our thoughts and opinions about them and not have them not even appear on an agenda. So if, if people are against having a proclamation, they can vote that way, but I feel like it should at least be on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a, a motion by Hancock, second by Boltman to have a proclamation in support of June Cape Pride Month, I believe, if I stated correctly, at the next meeting. All those in favor of the recommendation, signify by aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye, we are.
I'm gonna count that.
Show of hands better, or should we go to the board?
Roll call, please.
Okay, we go to a roll call, that's fine. Those in favors indicate by a yes. And those opposed, a no. The motion fails on a vote of eight yes and thirteen no. Okay, thank you. Okay, oral committee reports? Any committee wishing to make a, some report? Okay, the review, yes, okay.
Finance committee, just a couple of updates. We did review and discuss the, you know, the items that, that were brought forward in our last session over in Egg Harbor. Ken and Steve kind of went over some of that information and we gave them a little bit of direction on maybe the importance of each versus the other. So they're gonna do further research and I just want to let everyone know that that's, that day is not going without further process to come up with some solutions. And then second, I'd, I'd recommend that the, if you haven't had a chance to, Steve and Ken put together a very nice report on the special reserves report. So if you want to go into the agenda items, you'll see it in there and it's, it's very interesting. It's those, what do you call it, can off, non-general fund budgeted items, right? So I'd recommend that you, each of you take a look at that, it's very interesting.
Okay, and that'll be coming up at future finance committee meetings for the review of that?
Thank you.
Okay. The review of committee minutes? Questions on those? Review of vultures, claims, and bills? Excuse me. Okay, the next county board meeting is Tuesday, June twenty-fourth at nine AM. And the WCA conference is coming up in Wisconsin Dells, September twenty-first through the twenty-third.
And I need a show of hands who will commit to attending.
Okay, so the clerk is asking for-
Yeah, hotel rooms open next week, so I need a commitment if you are going to attend. Because I will book the rooms, but we don't want to book rooms that cancel later. So if you want to wait, it is at the Calahari, rooms are generally available for quite some time. If you aren't sure if you can go, please don't raise your hand today. If you know you can commit-
Those wishing to go?
Please let us know.
Okay.
Nine. Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Okay. Okay, could we have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Anigle, superv, and second by Roy Engelbert to adjourn, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.